Microphones on, everybody? All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is the North Miami Planning Commission for Tuesday, March the 5th, 2019. Seven PM in council chambers. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, please be seated. Roll call of board members, please.
Chair Kevin Seifried.
Present.
Vice Chair Charles Ernst.
Present.
Commissioner Kenny Eich.
Present.
Commissioner Jason James is excused.
He's excused.
Commissioner Bob Pashon.
Present.
Commissioner Michael McDeermid.
Present.
And Commissioner Melton Goodwin.
Present.
Okay.
All right, everybody's present. Amendments to the agenda? We would have one, of course, to swear in the new commissioner. Are there any others?
Nothing.
All right, well, at this point in time, we'll swear in the new commissioner. Sir, if you'll please stand, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name, sir.
I, Melton Goodwin.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm?
Do you solemnly swear or confirm?
Or affirm?
Or affirm.
That I will protect and defend the Constitution of the United States?
That I will protect and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Florida?
And the Constitution of the State of Florida.
And that I will well and faithfully perform?
And that I will well and faithfully perform?
The duties of board member for the Planning Commission for the City of North Miami on which I am now about to enter.
The duties of?
Planning Commission.
The Planning Commission.
For the City of North Miami.
City of North Miami.
On which I am now about to enter.
On which I am now about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you. You are sworn in. Will the secretary please correct that? It reads Board of Adjustment.
Yes, sir.
And when you get that fixed in, we'll execute the documents. And if it takes another month, it's all okay.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
We appreciate that.
These things happen, you know.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your understanding.
Oh, I'm very understanding.
And would you ask Mr. Goodwin to give a brief bio?
All right, sir, and when you can, if you could get a written resume to meet your convenience.
Absolutely.
If you'd like to give a minute, tell us about yourself.
Sure. Melton Goodwin, I am a parent of five, three adopted daughters, and two foster sons, soon to be adopted. I have lived in the City of North Miami since 2003. We built our home here and have watched a lot of fun things happen in the city. And I have served on several other boards, not in the city. Well, I do serve on the PTSA Board for the North Miami Senior High School, and I'm the vice president there. And so I've just recently wanted to become more active and play a role in the city.
And you're also in real estate?
Yes, I'm a realtor. And I've been doing that, actually worked on several developments, mostly in Miami, downtown, and been doing that since 2003 as well.
Thank you, Mr. Goodwin. Appreciate that.
All right. Do we have any other issues for Melton? And if not, then thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
All right. We have no communications, I assume? Correct?
Need to do the approval of minutes.
All right, we'll get the approval of minutes. Do we have a motion?
So move.
All right. Moved by Mike, seconded by Kenny. All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes are approved. We have no continued hearings, so let's go on to public hearings under five. This will be PC 4-19. An ordinance of the mayor and city council of the City of North Miami, Florida, providing for text amendment to Chapter 29 of the City of North Miami Code of Ordinances by amending Article 4, Division 2, entitled "Zoning Districts," specifically at Section 4-202, entitled "Types of Uses," to require a special exception approval for pharmacies, providing for repeal, conflict, severability, correction of scrivener's errors, codification, and for an effective date. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For the record, Debbie Love, City Planner, from the Community Planning and Development Department.
Sam.
This is, the amendment before you is to require a special exception approval for pharmacies.
There wasn't much to it this time.
And this is to amend the LDRs. This is actually to amend Section 4-202, as the title said. And there are a number of reasons that we want staff as recommending, and we're moving forward sponsoring this through the city administration, is, as many of you know, Florida statute says now that pharmacies and medical marijuana dispensaries have to be on parity for permitting purposes. So whatever you require for a pharmacy, that same requirement is for medical marijuana dispensaries. We currently have medical marijuana dispensaries listed as special exception. So we really need to fix the uses, table of uses, to require an amendment and require pharmacies to also require special exception approval. Staff, so you also, in addition to the Florida statute parity, staff also has concern about the fact that we have absolutely no ability to put any conditions on any pharmacies. And many of the pharmacies now are moving toward 24-hour operation and selling alcohol inside the pharmacy itself as part of their retail component, not just the standalone liquor stores that you see many of them do. So right now, we have no ability to put any conditions on it, and we think that we really would like to be able to put the conditions on it. So that's really the reason that this item is before you tonight, is, one, to comport better according to the statute, and, two, to allow us to put conditions on pharmacies. Some of the conditions that we would be looking at potentially imposing on that would be, let me give you a couple of ideas here, that no single-serving containers.
What was that last part, Debbie?
No single-serving containers could be sold, that they, you can only sell them as part of a package. That if you have a drive-thru, you can't sell alcoholic beverages for your drive-thru. Right now, there's nothing in our code that prohibits that. We want to be able to say that no alcoholic beverages could be sold to any person while they're in a vehicle, which means they can't go through the drive-thru. We also maybe would like to see if they have like a pass-through window, and I know you've seen some of those where they have the pass-throughs, that you wouldn't be able to sell alcoholic beverages through a pass-through as well. The issue comes also with the fact that we don't want them to put advertising on the windows of selling beer and wine, because that's really not, becomes really less attractive. And you see some of them now doing that. That employees on duty shall be at least 18 years of age. Just giving you a couple of examples of things that the Board of Adjustment may wish to impose based upon staff recommendation. The 24-hour, another item that we would want to make sure that we add is that the property owner shall ensure the business occupying the site complies with the City Shopping Card Ordinance. I think right now, when you do a permitted, as of right, we have a shopping card ordinance, and we can't impose that condition on them because it's outside of the LDRs. So unless it's caught at permitting, they get a pass, and they're supposed to be submitting to, Sam, is it you, or is it Public Works? They're supposed to submit a shopping card plan of how they're going to collect their shopping cards, make sure that the shopping cards don't end up down the road. And then there is actually penalties involved in that as well. So staff would like to be able to put some conditions on that as well. And that really, and then the next steps would be that this would go before city council on 3/26 for first reading, and second reading would be on 4/23, and then it becomes effective 10 days after the second reading.
Can I ask you?
And end that staff report, Mr. Chair.
All right, I think you have a question, but go ahead, Mr. Eich.
With regards to liquor being sold in the drugstore now, is this a new state statute that they don't have to, they have a liquor license, or what?
They have to have a liquor license, but some of those conditions are not imposed by their liquor license, that we would want to put like the signage and, like you can't, we don't really want to see a tub of Icewood beer as you walk inside the pharmacy.
Where they can grab it and go.
Right. And so you don't want those single serve, because now you are then becoming not a pharmacy.
I know, I was reading in the proposed legislation last year that there were, it was not going to be a separation by a wall with a drugstore, all supermarket and a liquor store. Now, has that passed?
No, that hasn't passed, however.
So they still have to have a divider?
They'll still have to have the divider if they have a liquor store. They don't have to have a divider if they're selling beer and wine within that retail.
Within that, yeah. Okay.
You can, it's liquor, it's, you know, liquor versus beer and wine.
Walgreens currently, they sell liquor there, but it's a separate entity, separate of the drugstore.
But you'll also see that what they'll do.
I'm sure.
Sorry, sir.
Okay. Oh. I was just saying that a lot of the current drugstores sell beer and wine right inside the establishment. You go right to the cooler and get a beer, you know, or a wine. But who is that upsetting? I mean, what?
It's twofold from staff perspective, but is primarily the issue of Florida statute parity. That's our prime concern. The secondary concern is being able to put some conditions on these pharmacies when they come in that better protect the neighborhood, the surrounding neighborhoods, because you end up having a little more crime generated from those type of uses. And this is becoming, this is not the only place where in the country and cities that they want to put conditions on pharmacies.
You know, I understand the marijuana factor in it, that you want to regulate it, but, okay, now you just, you mentioned something that anybody that works there has to be 18 years or older.
Right.
How about a kid that wants to work in the store at 16 or 17?
They're selling.
They're going to be denied the right to work? That's not fair.
If they sell beer and wine, yes.
Oh, wait a minute. And then how about Publix? Should we kick out all the part-timers in Publix?
I don't believe that's a local regulation. This would be, this would fall under state law.
Oh, wait a minute, you're telling me that if I'm 16 years old, I can't get a part-time job in Publix?
If you're going to be a cashier selling beer and wine now, you have to have somebody there that is, that's at least 18 to sell.
That's correct. I understand, but the way I interpreted what you were saying before is that if you were, you could not work in there, if you're 18 years and older, you can sell the beer?
The employees on duty that are going to sell beer and wine have to be 18 years.
So the cashier capacity, that cashier job description, they must be 18 years of age.
Whoever's going to actually be selling the beer and wine.
But anybody can work there to do stock or clean floors.
But you can work there, and you can stock the shelves and everything else. That's the point I'm trying to get at.
That's not the condition, the condition, and again, these are just example conditions. This is not necessarily something that Board of Adjustment may entertain. These are just some conditions.
So at this point in time, you're actually not attaching specifics, you're just?
No, sir. No, sir. These are just some examples.
Providing consistency for across the board to be in compliance with state law. We're not, at this point, imposing any of these conditions yet.
No, no, that would be at the Board of Adjustment level when they go in for the special exception. And it's a case-by-case basis, is what staff would recommend for certain conditions. This is just the reason I gave you some examples, because again, it's, the conditions are always placed on a case-by-case basis.
So now, Sunday, how can you grandfather this in? Is there a process? If Walgreens is already advertising this, and they're already doing it, are they grandfathered?
Those that are in existence are grandfathered in. It's when a new one comes in, or they come in for redevelopment, then they have lost their grandfathering.
Are they grandfathered by company or by location?
It's a special exception. Gary, go ahead.
So we're talking about the location of facilities, not the conditions being posed on them. So any existing facility, any existing pharmacy is grandfathered as far as their location is concerned.
Okay.
So you're adopting a new regulation to apply to future locations and possibly reconstruction of a facility, but I don't think you can force somebody.
No.
It would be the imposition of conditions.
Correct.
If they substantially rehabilitate or something like that.
That's right.
So if they're not actively doing what we would want them to be regulated through, they can't say, "Well, I'm grandfathered in, and so I can go ahead and put my sign up because," or, like you stated, if you don't want them to put a sign in the window.
Well.
If Walgreens says, "Well, I'm grandfathered in, I'm going to go ahead and slap a sign in the window." Can't they do it?
Currently, our code would not prohibit that, and this is not applicable to them.
Yeah, once you, once your business is open, Charlie, you're grandfathered in.
Right.
Now, operational conditions may be something else. I mean, if you adopt a new rule citywide that may apply the signage, and there's an annual, something, you know, something that is like under an annual renewable permit, you might have some jurisdiction over them for that. But for the most part, most of the facility and its operations would be grandfathered.
Would that include hours of operation also? Because you mentioned the fact that some of them are wanting to go to 24 hours a day.
Right. For hours of operation, we would not, for example, we would be consistent with the Florida alcoholic beverage law that says that there are no alcoholic beverages allowed between the hours of 12:00 AM and 7:00 AM. So we would be consistent with that. That may be another condition that we place on it. But again, we don't, these are just examples that, on a case-by-case basis, the Board of Adjustment, staff may make certain recommendations. We're just going to give you an idea of some potential conditions that we may want to consider down the road, but we're primarily.
But municipalities in Florida have different hours of operation for liquor licenses.
Um.
You can't open a North, 1 o'clock on Sundays, or 9 o'clock in the morning on Sundays, depending upon what city you're in.
So we are saying 12:00 AM to 7:00 AM could be a potential. Again, these are just examples of, it could be when you sell, I shouldn't have said it this differently to you, instead of giving you specifics, I should have given you broad examples, hours of operation for selling, you know, who could sell, things like, the one thing that we do look at is the not selling alcohol through the drive-throughs. I think that's something that staff really would, really feel strongly about. But we can't impose that retroactively at this point.
So at this point in time, the issue is not what kinds of conditions would you impose, because that's for a future board to decide. And those conditions would have to be consistent with what's permitted under state and local law.
But, correct me.
So the issue now is, do you, do we adopt a process that applies to pharmacies in the same manner that we are currently regulating medical marijuana dispensing facilities?
Yeah, pretty clear. Yeah, clear.
But aren't, don't they as of right, which is what basically we want to do? We want to make sure that they're, I feel as though we're like singling them out for their as-of-right use?
Now, remember, now, it goes back to this consistency with Florida statute. If we want to be able to put conditions on marijuana, medical marijuana dispensaries, which we do, then we need to have the special exception process for pharmacies as well.
All right, I can read you the Florida statute that applies. The sentence says, "A county or municipality may not enact ordinances for permitting or for determining the location of marijuana dispensing facilities, which are more restrictive than its ordinances permitting or determining locations for pharmacies licensed under Florida law."
Right.
So the city has already decided to require a special exception for marijuana dispensing facilities. The city wants to maintain that legally, it needs to treat pharmacies the same.
Same way.
And that's the ordinance that's being brought before you.
So it's a twofold issue for staff. It's both the statute, as I showed you the reason, and the ability to place some conditions on those in the future that are going to be selling alcohol or operating 24 hours a day, that we currently do not have the ability to.
You know, I don't have a problem with what you want to do. I do have a problem with, say, a 16-year-old cashier at Publix, and all of a sudden, somebody comes through with a six-pack, now they can't sell the beer.
They actually can't do it now. They actually have to have somebody else come up.
And that absolutely makes, I mean, I was up in Illinois in Bolinbrook, I mean, you're in a supermarket, and a person's checking out, you sell the beer. We may make an exception to that as long as there was an adult supervisor in the premises.
Yeah.
That's really not part of this discussion.
Right. Maybe you brought it up before about the 18-year-old or so on, it's not part of the discussion.
Of course, the state law in Illinois might be phrased differently, too.
I'm sorry?
The state law in Illinois might be phrased differently as to who's authorized to sell it under what circumstances.
Gary, would you, Gary, would you read the sentence that we're dealing with again, please?
So could you stay on this issue?
"A county or municipality may not enact ordinances for permitting or for determining the location of dispensing facilities, which are more restrictive than its ordinances permitting or determining locations for pharmacies licensed under Chapter 465."
Okay, so that's for determining where one may be located.
Yes.
So it doesn't say you, they've got to be treated like a pharmacy. It's just you can't be more restrictive in the location of it.
Well, I think the way it's being interpreted is the process. Whatever process you have for one, you have to be equal with the other.
Yeah. Well, but it says for the location, that's why I should read it again.
"Ordinances for permitting or for determining the location."
Permitting and determining the location.
The process that we have in place for determining the location for marijuana dispensing facilities is the special exception process.
Because if you look.
So the hit here is in the permitting side.
Because beyond that, because here's where I was trying to go, that beyond that, because I've, I've spent a lot of time in Washington, and I've got relatives in Colorado. And as I look at what they do, I mean, I understand it's not Florida statutes, but the, city by city, the marijuana dispensaries have different hours of closure. Denver was actually the most restrictive in Colorado, and they changed that two years ago. The locations are the locations. But the hours of operation, whether or not you can sell alcohol, doesn't have anything to do with the location, the delivery. Walgreens can have, I don't think they can have pharmacy, prescription drugs delivered, but they can certainly send Instacart in there and deliver all the deodorant and shaving cream to my house that I want. So that's got nothing to do with this. We can, we don't have to allow marijuana, medical marijuana dispensaries' delivery because Walgreens can do it. It's the location, it sounds like, that you've read to me that is what this is all about.
Well, it actually says ordinances for permitting or for determining location.
Right.
So permitting probably includes operational characteristics.
Exactly, operational, what the city can require them to do.
That's an issue to be determined, and I wouldn't suggest you get into any specifics about operational criteria at this point.
You're advocating the broadest definition of that, for the purpose of this, at this time.
At this point, it's just the equivalency of the process.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman? So Mike, one last question, please.
Mr. Pashon.
So do we have any, do we have any, I don't, I don't know where a pharmacy may be located, for example, in relation to a school, or rehabilitation center, or to another pharmacy. And I don't think there is one. So essentially, you could put a marijuana dispensary across the street from a school.
There is an additional provision in state law that it may not be located within 500 feet of real property comprising a public or private elementary school, middle school, or secondary school, unless you have a public hearing by the municipality. I'm summarizing, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, the state law already has separation.
So there is, there is distance separation already.
500 feet isn't that much, it's half a block or something, you know, but.
That's the way, Publix on Sixth Avenue is across the street from a church, it's 500 feet from their pharmacy location to that door of that church. That's how they can get away. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the ordinance.
All right, we have a motion on the floor for approval. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, is there any further discussion on the ordinance? Hearing, well, before we accept this, though, we do have to have a public hearing, don't we?
Yes, we do.
Yes, we do. Will you hold your motion for a moment there?
Yes.
Hold him one second.
The chair will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to this is invited to step forward. Second call for anyone out there, and the final call, I hear no thundering heard, I see no cloud of rising dust. And therefore, I shall close the public hearing. The chair will now entertain your motion.
Move to approve the item?
A motion by Mr. McDeermid for approval. Do we have a second?
And once again, I will second that.
Seconded by Mr. Ernst. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you, gentlemen.
We're done with that one.
And that's it, sir? That's your only item to meet.
Oh, hallelujah. All right, now, for the record, we're going to meet April, what's our date in April?
Second. Before we adjourn, I do have a minute or two.
Not a problem, I just want to clarify our next meeting date, April the 2nd. I will likely not be here. I have a pending conflict on my calendar for that date, so I'm letting you all know. Charlie, likelihood the gavel would pass to you for the April 2nd meeting. So, you know, be advised on that. And it looks like if everybody else is here, you'll have an easy call room. All right, Mr. Pashon, you may have your minute or two if you need it.
Thank you, sir.
Even three.
At the, the LDRs, any suggestions for modifications, the LDRs start at this committee, correct? And so at the last city council meeting, there was an 11th hour motion put forth by Councilman Galvin to put, to place a moratorium on administrative variances, because the, in his words, "The administrative variance process that had started when there was slight modifications are," if you, instead of being five feet from the property line, you were four and a half feet from your driveway, there was a process to go through, contact the neighbors and the like, get an administrative variance and go forward. So there seemed to have been some stretching of what was administratively varied in certain cases, and it was coming up from a lot of people, so there was a moratorium placed on granting those. So one of the items, and then now this is the one that I'm getting phone calls all day about, is recreational vehicles parking. So in, I live in Keystone Point, and over the President's Day weekend, there were at least eight and maybe more 45-foot motorhomes or trailers parked in people's driveways. And they were there for about 10 days. Under any circumstance, they can't be parked in the driveway. And whether they were cited or not, I can't get all of that out of code enforcement about who was cited and who wasn't, it's out of my security clearance. But, so the city attorney has taken, so they're now back, by the way. They left, and they've all returned, just like birds coming back for the winter. And so there are two issues that get raised. One, if they were cited, but they never went before a magistrate, if you go back, they don't count as a repeat offense. So that, I think we need to look at the definition of what is, in fact, a repeat offense, because the definition says, "Repeat violation means a violation of a provision of the code by a person who has previously been found by a special magistrate or other quasi-judicial or judicial process to have violated, et cetera, et cetera." So if you cite these people for what they're doing, and it never goes before the magistrate, and they come back and do it again every Monday, they're never a repeat offender. And they get two weeks to clear it out. So the guy can actually be there as long as he leaves once every 14 days. And that's a, that's a problem. So now, I'll, so here's the, it's part two of the problem. So all of these vehicles are now returning to my neighborhood. And before I came here tonight, I went, I live on a one-block cul-de-sac, and there's four streets that are one block long, and there's at least one or maybe two violations on every street of this process right now. And the, I was informed this morning by code enforcement that because we don't, we have a moratorium on code, on administrative variances, that code enforcement has been instructed to ignore the violations during the moratorium period, which could be six months. So my neighbors have a real problem with that, and I have a real problem with it. So what do we need to do, Ms. Love? Because it seems like the beginning, the recommendations for how do we change the LDRs start with this commission, and so what do you recommend?
We are going to be scheduling a community workshop on 3/28 to deal with the administrative variance, having an administrative variance discussion, based upon, for example, those other ones that we're going to see.
Your mic, Debbie, your mic.
I'm so sorry.
Thank you, Ms.?
My apologies. We're scheduled for a 3/28 community workshop to talk about administrative variance process. For example, the results of those last workshops are going to be coming Um, for example, the results of those last workshops are gonna be coming before you all. We already have them scheduled, I think the, you've got one in May and then one in June and, or July, that's gonna be filtering to you and moving through. Uh, so the workshop really is the place where we're gonna start that conversation. Uh, so those of you, we really encourage you to, you, you'll get an invitation, um, to attend it. So we really encourage you to attend and provide your feedback at the, because we'll have another facilitated discussion as we've had before and then at the end, we'll come back and craft, uh, changes based upon the recommendations that come out of that workshop.
It's my understanding that the RV vehicles are supposed to be parked alongside the house, hidden from view?
The, the width of the vehicle is greater than the setback. So, so for, so here, so here's, what, so, so the city attorney put out, it's greater than the setback. So the city attorney put out one of, one of his options because he, he pointed out that there was, because this occurred late in the City Council meeting, there was really no discussion of consequences, ramifications and the like. So none of this kinda got fleshed out. So his legal position is you're denying due process. Now, I'm not the attorney and he's a very brilliant attorney, but I'm saying is you can't park there and you can go apply for an administrative variance and if we don't have one, you still can't park there. I mean, that's where it starts.
So, Mr. Petron, it sounds like this is an enforcement issue and not a legislative issue.
No, it's, I don't think it's an enforcement issue at all. They've been instructed not to enforce it.
Right, which makes it an enforcement issue. And there are ready regulations in place.
Well, no, it's a management issue. I mean, it's a management issue, it's not.
But it's not, it's not an issue as to what the language of the land development regulations say. They're either permitted there or they're not.
No, but, but, so I'm, let me, let me, you wanna walk the street with me one day because what happens is the, the remedy for a motorhome, let's use that one for example, because I think part of this stemmed from recreational vehicles, that if I have a boat, I don't live on the water and I don't have a place to put it. So if I wanna put it at my home, I gotta put it on, I gotta get administrative variance and put it on the side yard where it's concealed. So that's the idea. But now I've got a fifty-foot motorhome that is wider than the side yard, so there's no possible way that the, the remedy of an administrative variance for that vehicle exists, there's no place to put it. So I'm, I'm recommending, A, that vehicles like that, the administrative variance process is null and void. And to give me six we, two, two and a half weeks to move something that, if I were parked in the city of Miami illegally, they'd have me towed in two hours, not two and a half weeks. So something that could be driven off, needs to be driven off. I, and, and this, this time delay, to top it, you can't make this stuff up, to top it all off, on the fifteenth of February, I get a notice of violation that I've got a boat parked in my side yard illegally. Well, guess what, it's not me, it's a, it's somebody with another street that sounds like mine. So I get this four days after the inspection. So the inspection was on February eleventh, I get it on the fifteenth to move the boat and the reinspection date is two twenty-six. So the same thing applies to the motorhome. Get the keys, drive it off, it does, it's not supposed to be there and the application for an administrative variance doesn't exist because the remedy's not available to you. You're too big. I mean, it's craziness and we're, and it's not an enforcement issue. It's, it's, all these things just don't fit together, so.
Mr. Petron, there is actually, in our code, there is a provision, if you cannot fit your RV in your side yard or the rear, there is a provision in the administrative, um, variance process that allows you to park it in your front. It had, with certain conditions, it has to remain ten feet off of your property line, it has to have screening, um, but the community planning only does that if you can't fit it elsewhere on your property as required. But you still have to get your neighbor's approval, you still have to go through that variance process, um, so they.
So part of the problem with that is there's one, there's one example of that in the neighborhood and they have plumbed the hot, they've plumbed the motorhome into the sewer line. So, I mean, somehow or other that ceases to be a recreational vehicle and it becomes an accessory dwelling.
Exactly.
That's right.
It just seems like code enforcement's not doing their job.
Doesn't that change the whole dynamics now of, of, of that motorhome or that motorcoach?
Yeah.
That would change the whole thing, that, that would definitely be a code enforcement violation, I mean, that's preposterous.
Until they're instructed not to.
I agree with you, that's preposterous. That is.
We, again, we encourage you to plan to come to the three twenty-eight workshop. Um, we have an, it's probably going to be at Gwen Margolis, uh, so, uh, the invitations will be going out soon and it goes out through constant contact, so all of you are on it as long, as well as members of the public and staff, so we encourage you to attend that.
Is this, uh, something that's advertised in the paper as?
Uh, not for that, no. A workshop is not normally advertised like that, um, but what we do, because it's a community workshop, it's not a City Council.
Well, if Ford members are attending, you might wanna advertise to satisfy sunshine.
Yeah, that's a good point there, Gary.
The reason I ask is because that's one of the issues that I've come up against that, um, with new staff, um, as I've seen so much turnover in staff, uh, throughout the years, is the, um, the awareness factor. Uh, I mean, I used to know everything that was going on with the city and I would get, um, mail, uh, from, uh, the various departments on something that affected me, my property or the, the general area. Yeah, I get nothing now these days. Um, so that's, that's why I asked, I just wanna see if we are, make sure that we're reaching out, uh, to a broader audience than, a, as we, as the city used to, than we have been doing, um, lately.
Okay. For meetings like this, we do advertise in the newspaper and, um, it is on our event calendar. However, for community workshops, we nor, they normally send out a flyer and then we put it on our website. So, uh, again, I'll, I'll, um, speak with our director and our public involvement folks and see, you know.
And get an advisory, the informants to held on whether that's appropriate notice.
Uh-huh, I'm going to.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, if there's nothing further?
Motion to adjourn?
Debbie, did, um, most subscriptions for us go out, you know? The subscriptions to the various, uh, magazines?
Remember you're gonna reject, you were gonna check that?
Right, Marlene, uh, I believe Marlene took care of that because it was part of the, it's in, in your budget.
We haven't gotten anything.
It usually takes like six weeks, six to eight weeks for them to start.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we have a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, we are finished.